Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Whitman. I'm Chair of the Shasbury Select Board. I'd like to bring this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order on Monday, December 19, 2022, at 6:30. First thing on the agenda, is there anything on the agenda that is a conflict of interest with any of the board members?
No.
No.
We have several minutes. First one is December 7th. Everybody was here. Entertain a motion to accept them as printed.
So moved.
Moved by Mike, second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried, 4-0-0. Okay, the next one is November 21st. Again, everybody was here. So moved, moved by Mike.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 4-0-0. And the last one is December, December 5th. And again, everybody was here. So moved, moved by Mike.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried, 4-0-0. Okay, warrants. Quite a few today. Okay, the first one is warrant number 19. For $125,027.80. The, uh, so moved, moved by Mike.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. I'll read off the ones that are $1,000 or more. Uh, Ag Agribusiness, $3,551. Applied Rescue Systems, $1,765. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont, $8,635. Beneath County Regional Commission, $7,000.
That's the annual dues.
Beneath Entire Corporation, $2626. Chilling Supply, $2,306.
It's parts for plows and sanders.
Uh, G-A-Gul Fuel, $1,545. Marx Power LLP, $2,470.
Those are the mediators.
Oh, okay. Uh, Morris Repair, $1,729. And North Bend East Water Department, $53,750. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 4-0-0. Uh, the next, we are paying the community appropriations. This is the checkoff that was on the ballot at town meeting where each of the community appropriations asked the town for money. Uh, the ones that are approved, and I think they all were approved.
They were all approved.
They are being paid today, okay? The total is $93,275.
So moved.
Moved by Martha.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried, 4-0-0. Uh, we have Payroll Warrant 8A for $64.73.
So moved? Or second?
Moved by Martha, seconded by Mike. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
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 So carried, 4-0-0. And Payroll Warrant Number 11 for $28,023.49.
So moved.
Moved by Mike.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? No. So carried, 4-0-0.
Eric, can I see that, um, after you're done signing it? I think it's not really 11. I think that might be the wrong number.
Okay.
I need to look at the inside and then we should just correct it on the record.
Okay. Maybe I'll give you the whole pile and you can pass it on to Dave.
Yeah, just the top one, right?
It'll go to Dave in the end though there.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just need to see what Joan called it inside. They changed the paperwork around. Is that, oh, Payroll 11, is that what you said?
Yes.
That's correct.
That's what's on the front.
Sorry, I was, okay, yep, that's actually correct.
Okay, announcements? We are still looking for economic development members.
Three, I believe.
Three, yep.
You have three or?
No, we're looking for three members.
Looking for three more.
Three more.
The Economic Development Committee, which is a standing committee, and then the Coal Hall Committee, which is a
Temporary.
Temporary committee.
And we need members for both?
Yes.
Correct.
Anybody else have any announcements? Public comments? Lots of people here.
Should I start?
Absolutely.
If you want to just come right on up so that folks can hear you.
Well, you don't have to, but.
So, my name is Corin Lamont, I live on 7A in Shasbury.
Yep.
Um, and please let me say what I have to say. I've got a couple of questions, and if we start answering the questions as I go along, we'll get completely sidetracked because I don't believe you have the answers for me tonight. Um, for four days on 7A, we could smell decomposing bodies or decomposing animals at night. Up on the top of the hill, Howard's old property, Mance's composting up there, which nobody, my understanding in the town, was aware of until I spoke with Dave Durfee. Apparently, there was a state permit that was issued. We'd like to know when it was issued and for what. And who from the town received that state permit when it was sent here to the town? Because there is no town permit. We're concerned about our air quality. I don't know about you, but I don't want to be smelling dead bodies periodically. Okay, we're worried about the land. I know when Mike Biddy had an issue with them up by the dump, and he sold his property, part of the stipulation was a leach field was put in. What's going on up there? Is that stuff leaking into our soil up there? We should, we should know. And the water, is our water protected? We don't want another PFOA situation on our hands. Plus, there is protected wetlands across the street. The reservoir is up above. Can the stuff leak into our water system? He tried this before up at the end of Rendus Shasbury, y'all know, up there by the chocolate barn, and the town voted him out. They weren't putting up with it. So somehow it got snuck in. September of 2011, you people put a moratorium on composting, and there's nothing, and I've gone through the minutes, may have, maybe I've missed it, but September 2011, there was a moratorium. You people wanted to do more research. So what is our recourse? I think we have a right to know as citizens of Shasbury who live basically within that area. I could throw a rock up there, and I'm a pretty good thrower. When that stuff all melts and stuff, it all comes downhill. We all know it. And it comes right down, down the hill, across the street, into the grate across from Celia's every year, and her yard is full of water. You know, something needs to be done about it. I really think this was snuck in without the citizens knowing about it because numerous citizens have contacted me, and they're not happy about it. They wouldn't have allowed it. I think it should have been put up to a town vote, town discussion about it, and now all of a sudden, we have it up there. What's going on up there?
So, you want an answer?
That's it, done.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
And I did contact the EPA.
What was up there was a shredded paper product. There's no animals or anything else. It is classified as a soil amendment by the state. In other words, there are nutrients in that product that helps the soil, adds to the nutrient, nutritional value of the soil and that sort of stuff. It was brought in over a few days and put in there, and then with the plan of then spreading it all at once. Once it was in the pile, it started an anaerobic reaction because of the nitrogen that was in the product, and so that's where the smell was coming from. The minute it scooped up and spread among the field, there's a pretty good sized field up there, a 20 or 30 acre field, that they spread it on. Once you expose it to the air, the anaerobic action stops, and so there's probably a smell for that day that they're spreading it.
It was four days.
It was, yeah.
Four days.
Do you know what day it was spread?
How did I know?
We just know it started Thursday night and went through Sunday.
It, it was, it was all spread on the 14th. Did it smell after the 14th?
I don't have a calendar. I'm gonna take a look at a calendar right now.
It does know that it was Thursday.
So Wednesday, Wednesday was the 14th.
Wednesday and Thursday, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, so if it was spread on Wednesday, that was the 14th?
Yeah, and that's, and that was the
And we smelled it after.
After the fact, for several days, you said.
It was three straight days.
Opposed?
Yep, in the evening.
And it's worse at night into the morning.
And in the morning, it smelled like something was burnt. That's the smell that I got when I left to go to work in the morning, was the smell of something was burnt out there, like ashes were just stirred up.
When was the state permit issued?
I don't believe you have to have a state permit to apply a soil amendment. That would be the same as a farmer applying manure to his fields.
So it's, it's covered under the right to farm rules? Okay.
It's a soil amendment.
And so is this something that potentially he might do again?
I don't.
The Mance folks?
Again.
Have we chatted with the Mance family?
We could, we could start a conversation with them.
I think it might be worth it seeing that there are folks that are here that are concerned.
Because it was so bad, the smell.
Right. It sounds like also it might have been improperly stored because of that reaction that happened. It sounds like you're not supposed to leave it like that.
I don't know if there's any restrictions on that.
Can I just borrow your pen for a minute?
Oh, of course.
Just, just to be clear, so we did get a number of complaints, and none of us knew about it because they're not required to tell us it's like any foreign product gets put down.
And what was it called again?
It, it was a shredded paper product.
So it's like pulp? It's a pulp, like pulp composting?
Technically, it's
Pop sludge?
No.
If I may, I think it might be best to make an inquiry and get the exact name before we start saying things that we're not positive of what the name is.
I know what it is. All, all the money that is printed in the United States is done out in Massachusetts. All the old bills are shredded. That's what it is. It's shredded money.
Interesting.
It's taped certain pieces together.
And so somehow that provides some kind of soil as it breaks down from the shredding pieces of it?
It's very high in nitrogen.
In nitrogen, so it helps with growing.
Which is what the reaction was in an anaerobic condition.
Right, right.
Okay, so I, so what's going to be the purpose of this? What is the whole plan for this?
It's a soil amendment. It makes, it enhances the soil.
Up in that air?
For, for growing, it sounds like, potentially, of some kind.
Is it an apartment area such as corn, alfalfa, I mean, that kind of thing?
Can't answer it. I know he's cutting back hedgerows and things like that, which may have been your smell because he has a burn permit. Once the snow is on the ground, he can burn, he can burn brush and that sort of stuff with our permit. But he did, I know he did tell the fire department in case they saw smoke or something up there that he was going to burn. So that may be what your rationale is too.
So we don't know how long this is going to go on though, right? We don't know if it's going to be again, is it going to happen again?
I know it won't happen until after the 1st of April because he can't, farmers or nobody can spread soil amendments on the soil from December 15th through the 1st of April.
Just because there's no ground cover? You can't get it into the, the ground?
So this possibly could happen again this summer, the smell of that?
Yes.
And then what do we do at that point?
I don't know. If it's brought in and spread immediately, the fact, what you smelled was the fact that it was brought over several days before they, before they spread it. So you had a pile that was beginning to work like compost, but it is not a composting facility. It's all been spread.
So it's already composted before?
No, it's, it's just, it's just paper shreds, just like what you put in a shredding action.
You shredded paper in your own home and kept piling it?
But if you keep it in a pile, it gets hot.
Right.
And the hotness makes nitrogen and other chemicals, you know, natural organic chemicals come off of it.
What's our recourse this summer or after April 1st if we start smelling the decomposing?
That's a, I mean, for so many, and I have asthma, and I'm telling you, I couldn't even go outside. That's how bad it was.
Right.
It's the fact that it was stored for several days. If he brings it in and spreads it the same day or something like that, there is no smell. You won't get that, that reaction of the nitrogen and that sort of stuff.
That would be the key then, you know, storage.
That's right.
But if we do get that smell?
That means it's being stored again if we smell it.
What do we do?
I don't know if you can do anything.
I think that because of what I was alluding to was those right to farm laws that allow folks that are using agri, land for agricultural purposes and putting those things down, I don't think that there is legal ways that you can, um,
Unless there's
address it unless there's
Which I believe there's probably going to be more quality.
Which, but I, I don't know technically. I don't know if maybe we have our representative here, if he might have some knowledge about that too. But I think maybe it's worth going to Mr. Mance and, and just asking the question so that we actually have all of the facts and as to what might happen, and then
Okay.
we can
I think we would do something in writing that we could see so that we know what's being done and how it's being done, not just, not that I don't
Of course.
I don't take your word for it, but we have a right as taxpayers in this town to be able to see in writing what is going on and what's really happening so that we have an idea, so that if we have this really bad smell again, we're definitely going to make phone calls because that would, it wasn't pleasant for three days. That's bad.
Yeah.
I mean, when you can't even go out and take a dog outside because you can't, the smell is so strong and it's in your nostrils. That's not good.
Isn't there, if I'm not mistaken, isn't there an article in the zoning bylaws that, about offensive smells to beyond one's reason, you know?
I don't know anything about zoning bylaws.
I, I don't know if there are. I know that there are in specific cases like for, um, dog feces and things like that, but the problem is how do you quantify and qualify those smells? Like obviously, we could say that they smell terrible because I did smell that smell and it was very terrible. It was, it was nauseating, nauseating, um, on every level, but, um, I don't know if there's a way to kind of, you know, like with noise level, you can, you know, use a decibel rater to say it's this high and that's a dangerous level because we know those levels, whereas I'm not sure necessarily you'd have, you'd be able to do that.
Uh, zoning can't overrule agricultural practices that are allowed by the state. So it's like spreading manure. A lot of people don't like that next to their house, but there's nothing you can do about it. I prefer manure. I know, I believe you, I believe you.
I would rather smell manure anyway.
But if this is an approved product, then it's an agricultural use, that's a difficult thing.
But how come it wasn't allowed to come in so close into town?
Into the village, that's what I don't understand.
Yeah, into the village.
You gotta stop and think, it's coming downhill, so we're getting it, and we're in that area. You could have walked all the way around Cleveland Avenue and smelled it everywhere through there.
Right.
So it's, it's in that area. Why is it in the village? Usually, they put them out far enough away so that you don't have to have this strong smell coming at you.
For two days, you had a temperature inversion. Remember that day? It was so foggy. The, the temperature was warmer on top than it was down here, so it held everything down normally because it was warm. What is coming out of that compost was warm, it would have risen up, but you had, we had a temperature inversion, so it just, it made it totally worse than what it would have been. That, it was just the perfect storm. I don't know if there's anything that says that you can't apply something to soil or to your lawn or anything else within the village. That, it's a big field up there, and so I don't know.
I don't know how it's zoned either.
That's, that's not village residential anyway.
No.
But it's, it's, if it's farmland, it's, it's farmland.
All farmland is, is, is RR40, almost all of
Yeah.
Yeah, RR40.
So it's probably RR40.
I think it is.
Yeah, it's not in the village center or the village residential district.
It, the lines are round, the lines are
Commercial business that he's running up there?
No.
No.
The Mance family owns the land.
But bringing in those big bales and because it falls under agricultural is what you're telling me?
It wasn't bales, it was ball, you know, it was, it was in a, it was shredded paper in a truck, in a dump truck and just dumped. And then the pile, over a couple of days, the pile started working because it
It got heated.
We eliminated the oxygen
The paper gets wet.
That was in the pile.
Eric, as I said before, then the hope heated to this would be as soon as it's dumped, it's got to be spread.
Yes.
Is that the way I'm?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's probably what didn't happen?
It, it didn't happen. I was, I was up there, I saw the piles.
Okay.
And, but I was up there the day he was spreading it.
Well, is it the act of what? Is there anything that can be done?
I, I don't, I don't think we can make him do anything, but I'm, I'm sure he's a, he's a neighbor and a citizen, and if we, if we just ask him to spread it as soon as it comes in, and maybe he's not going to do anymore. I don't know. It just, it wasn't our, I just found out what it was and that type of thing, okay?
So this stuff just lays on the soil? Just lays there?
Well
And then it comes, goes into the soil, it will get composted, and, you know, if they turn it over into the ground, you know, when they plant, which will likely be what happens.
It is bare ground, you've got grass. Grass and, and that sort of stuff up to your, up to your knees, so, you know, it went down through all that.
I've got just a thought, and if no one else wants to say anything, I'll jump in to wrap things up, but I think that it, it sounds like perhaps Trevor hadn't been there to experience how horrible it smelled.
He was up there the day we were spreading it.
Until, until the day he was spreading it. And, and I would like to think that if he had known what the smell was like and that that was, that reaction was hap, that chemical reaction was happening, that he would not have let it sit there for the however many days, however many hours it was. Yeah, and I, I think it would be great before thinking about, you know, what, you know, statutorily could be done, to just have a conversation.
Yeah.
Because as you say, he's a citizen and a neighbor and a resident, and I would imagine that if it's something he wants to do again, he would be thinking, well, okay, but not leaving it there to molder.
Any other comments?
We have one more.
Thank you for that. We have one more person, but with a different topic on.
Something different, I guess. Good evening, folks. Um, I'm Jenny Rosicky. I'm the Director at the John G McCullough Free Library. I'm here with the joyful news that the library building has reopened to the public. Uh, it did so on December 1st. Our renovation and critical repair projects are, they're complete enough to open the building again. So, we have. And, um, I have with me, if you, if you want to pass them around, I have magnets with our hours on them. They go right up on your fridge. Uh, we have plenty of these at the library, and all those in attendance are welcome to stop by and pick one up if they don't do so this evening. I also wanted to just sort of, um, a little more good news.
If you want to send them around.
Uh, we're coming to the end of our five-year strategic plan, and, um, just to give you all a status update on that, I have another handout. It's color-coded to indicate progress, and all of these things, all of these improvements, all of these initiatives have been possible with support and enthusiasm. So, um, from folks in Shasbury here. So, many thanks, and our next five-year plan is in process. Uh, we did community surveys over the summer. We're going to do a few focus groups to sort of focus in on the, what do you mean by this sort of improvement? Um, and then we'll have a blueprint for the next five years.
And, and on this very beautiful color-coded sheet, all the things in green have been completed?
Yeah.
And the red ones have not been? Is that your color scheme?
Green is completed. Green is completed, blue is in progress, and red is found not feasible or not complete.
So you've got most of your plan done, it looks like, from that, which
You should probably set five or six goals for your five-year plan, not 20. So
That's incredible.
So, that's where we are.
Congratulations. That's a lot of hard work for Shasbury. We appreciate that.
You're welcome. It's always an honor and hope to see you at the library.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Dave, did anybody on Zoom raise a hand or anything?
No.
Okay. Petrus report?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Can we look at the cash flow first, please? Okay. I've been pretty busy. We are loving our new dollar bill counter. That has improved the quality of life miserably. You can see the transfer station number there. That's almost all one-dollar bills. That state pilot, that's something we get every year for
Payment in lieu of taxes for Shasbury State Park and all the properties. They're like a fishery thing they have over here on 67.
Yeah. And you see that big number for clerk revenue? That's, that was accumulating for quite a while. I, we shouldn't let it go that long because some of the checks by the time they get to me are on the verge of being too, too old to deposit, but caught up now. I want to look down to the bottom there. Yep, that's our cash position. I'm not, I'm not extending it to the budget because it's mid-month and I, it's not a very helpful thing when, so that check's outstanding, but we're, that's, that's a normal amount and we're in good shape in the post-property tax collection period. I think, okay, let's look at the reserve. I don't think there's anything. Unless you have any questions about any of that? Yes, please.
The clerk revenue, is that all the checks that she takes in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's
You just don't have a system of bringing them up?
We have a system. It's just that with, it's coordination between downstairs and Joan and when there, a lot of the time there are two ships passing in the night, so they need to schedule a time when they can both do it. And then, of course, the more of them there are, the harder it is to deal with it, so.
Because she has to say this, there's this many checks and Joan has to sit down and say, yes, you're turning
So they've got a cash register down there, but it's a process and it, it takes a while and, you know, it just has to be coordinated.
Yeah, okay.
And you can see that that's, that's a, a whole lot of $15 checks. It's like that.
Yes.
So it's, it's a lot to catch up with.
Yeah.
But we're completely caught up right now. Let's see, so for the reserve accounts, you can see mostly it's there at the 260 line. That's just water. I was collecting water this past month because the due date was December, I want to say 10th. And then we just got this mysterious down at the bottom. We got another $240 in ARPA money. Don't ask me why, but that, that came through, through, from, I guess, from the feds through the state.
Well, we'll take it.
I know. I've never, I never turned no money, but I'm not sure what that is. And that's the last thing there is a sidewalk fund, I think a reimbursement grant, right? Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. So you want to go down to the bottom of that one? We already saw that money on the, oh, did I? Yeah.
No, you didn't. Oh, down here.
So that's our, the cash in the bank there is 1.5 million and almost all of that is, I mean, two-thirds of it is ARPA money. Any questions about that?
Nope.
I'm back doing positive pay with the bank and I've been getting dings on it every, every day practically. It does not like two-line addresses, so it's, it keeps me on my toes making sure I catch those. They only give you like a four-hour window of opportunity and if you don't, if you don't say, "This check's good," then they, they return it and it's, it's like a bounced check, so we would
Oh, my gosh.
Do you have to pay an overdraft?
No, it would just, well, yeah, maybe. Not an overdraft, but it would just be that the person who tried to cash one of our checks would, would be told that it didn't go through, which would be embarrassing, so.
Yeah.
So, do they email you or call you or?
Yeah, they email me and I also, I often beat the email because I go to the, to the bank website first thing every morning, but
Okay.
Yeah, this, it's fairly window narrow, a very
That's very window.
Keeps me on my toes.
But this was all something the accountant kind of told us that would be a good thing to do, is that right?
I think it is a very good thing to do.
The auditors? Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a very good thing to do. The, luckily, we don't have any completely fake checks that have gone through so far, but what, what they don't like is when, we're also paying for payee match. So there are bad guys out there who get a hold of checks somehow, scrub the writing off it and then write it as a personal check to themselves. That has never happened to us, but it doesn't like when it says, they don't like our checks to the sheriff because we had a second line that had the sheriff's name, so it didn't match what we sent them and they didn't like that.
Well
It wasn't a perfect match.
But it's nothing, something that the software systems can't work on and make it better, right?
Well, what they do have at the bank is a person who's supposed to go through all, every time there's a ding and they're supposed to look at it and, and use their judgment and they've been being very, very picky about it.
Okay.
But, but anyway, no, it's a good thing we're doing it. I'm glad we're doing it. It's just, the pressure is on me not to miss a day because we do get
Well, that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah. Well, I think that
Would it come to you, Dave, also?
They wouldn't. I need to have a second in command, but it, it's got to be somebody who's actually here. I mean, Joan is my assistant treasurer, but she's not here during the window, so we need to have somebody that I can go to. I would, I'm a little leery about having it be Dave. I don't think it's really appropriate for Dave to be my backup, but maybe
You'll have to let me, if somebody can run by Jordan, but it does get to be a bit of a conflict when submitting things to be paid and then verifying that.
Yeah, right.
Right with the bank.
Yeah, well
But we're small, so there might not be another option either, so.
And it's really not, it's not creating a check, it's just looking at it, saying yes or no.
Yes, it's just a verification.
Yeah, right. I think, I think it might be okay.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm still sort of getting used to it, so I wanted to get it up and running before I started messing around with it, but anyway, it's, it's, it's working and I had paused it, you may recall, for a couple of months while the, with the bank transfer. I wanted them to get their act together before it took on this, this extra work. But anyway, I think that's all I have to say. Any questions about anything else? Get those water payments in. They're, they're late, but I'll still take your money.
Program still available from the state? Do you know?
Uh, I think it's winding down. I think through the end of the year, they'll give you 70%.
70% to the end of the year. They extended it this morning. I don't have the exact details. I'm going to put it on the website. It's going to be much more income-based. There's a figure 30% of what, I don't remember in my head from reading it at eight o'clock this morning, but we'll get the information up on the webpage where people can still use it.
Yeah, and I haven't heard any of those updates. I would think they would come, they would supply me with the information, but, but what happens is I just basically get an email and said, approve this person or don't approve this person. Okay.
Thank you, Joan.
Yep.
Thank you. So in a previous meeting, Chris Williams was here and talked about what the planning board had been working on and I think there's five.
Yes.
There are five things that we are going to send to the voters for their approval and this has been just an information thing, letting, letting them know. At tonight's meeting, we will entertain a motion to send it to the town meeting, okay? For the, for the voters' approval, but why don't we just go through what they are?
So, the first was some changes to definitions. We've added some changes to the percentages of the accessory dwelling units and then added tiny homes to our definition of manufactured homes. There is a new section that is prohibiting a new facility to promote the discharge of munitions in Shasbury. There is a new section on how we are going to go forward with amending permits, especially if they're small zoning permits, I should say, for site plans. And so the zoning administrator will have a little bit more leeway to help there so that they don't have to go back to the DRB. And then there were some changes to our subdivision regulations with open space subdivisions and changing things to protect wildlife corridors and, and open spaces. So all of those, I believe, are on the website for perusal.
At our last meeting, we did make a recommendation that if, if a permit is approved by the DRB and there is a, there is a small change, at least the budding landowners have to be notified. It was, it was
I think it was a may to shall. Yes, yes, that is correct. So that language will get sent on?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Martha.
Yes.
Okay, so what I entertain is a motion to forward this on to the, to be printed on the ballot and let the voters decide if they want to approve them or not because it has to be approved by the voters.
So moved. Second?
Moved by, moved by Mike, second by Joe. Is there any discussion? This is just, it's all up to the voters. Okay, no discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 So carried 400, so it will be on the ballot at town meeting, okay? Okay. So every time we post, these are, there's some new roads that we're changing the traffic or the speed limit on, we get another call. So if somebody brought it to our attention that Shasbury Hollow from the New Covert, which is something we put in on last year or year before, on up through gets very narrow and probably would not sustain a 35 mile an hour limit. Dave is going to go up and measure it, but until then, we're adding it to the list.
Yes, and anybody else out there who has another road to think of? There's 70 miles a road and this is great, though. Bring it to our attention. It does delay things a little bit, but this hasn't been rewritten in 40 years, so, you know, a few more weeks isn't going to hurt it much, but each addition, just to have the quote-unquote engineering study, I have to go out and get the distance of all the driveways, how many driveways there are, the width of the road, where it narrows, and so it takes a little time to do all that. But if anyone else has a concern about a road, let us know. I would really, one reason why we're not just doing this in bits is because it'd be nice to have one thing permanent for the next, maybe not 40 years, I hope somebody looks at it again before 40 years, so, but it's a little long. Well, we did do the Cold Spring, did the speed analysis on there, so just to give a brief update on that, that was done from October 11th to October 18th. Very low usage, only 626 cars in seven days, vehicles, not cars. And the average speed was 30 miles an hour. 79% were under 35 miles an hour and the ones over 35, 90% were between 36 and 45 miles an hour. There was only two cars that exceeded 50 miles an hour and 12 that were between 46 and 50. So that's about what you would expect there. We'll continue on because of the bends in the road and the narrowness at the very top, we'll have that to 25.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Is that going to be shared with the folks of Cold Spring Road via
You have to say one, I guess.
Roberta. I know that she would, I think, appreciate
I think, Oliver, do you have a question? Yeah, go ahead, Oliver. You're on mute, though.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say how grateful we are on Cold Spring for this to happen. We have so many, like 100% increase of children on our road and so, I'm just talking to Emily Waterman now and she's just about to give birth. So this is very important to us, so I wanted to thank David Kirin for this and for this study that says that there were two cars that exceeded 50 miles an hour and that, that those folks would be, it would be good for the police to have stopped them and given them a ticket because this is not acceptable.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, Oliver.
Okay. Time to, so also at a previous meeting, we voted to have Dave look into hiring a reappraisal company. It probably wouldn't be done until '26 because there's a backlog and even when they start, it takes two years. So we have a contract. Reappraisal agreement. I won't read the whole thing because it's, lawyers drew it up and everything else, but it's, what was the total, Dave?
The total is $186,000.
Yeah, I see it right here. Total cost is, for reappraisal, will be $186,000. We have more than that in a fund.
We have much more than that. Part of, the state sends towns money every year to put in a fund so that they can pay for reappraisal, so we actually have this money in the bank already. And just to flesh this out a little bit, Nimric, whose, whose proposal this is, is our contracted assessor right now, so we already have a step up because they're already doing our assessments. So when they come in, it's a different team, but when they come in, they're working with their own people coming in here. And by that time, our assessor's assistant will be full up to speed on everything going on, too. They expect it to start in May of '24. If we get on the list now, that's how backed up these things are. So they're expecting May of '24. I would expect it to be after that. And we're on the verge of getting to the point over the next couple of years where the state would order us to do a reappraisal. And as our assessor puts it, that's not really fair and equitable if you wait for the state to order you, because when the state orders you, that means you're out of balance, one way or the other.
And it could be four years.
Yeah.
Four years.
When they order you, it could be four years before you get it done, so it just makes it less fair. So I think the right thing to do is get on the list. And of course, they own it, 186, or four, whatever I just said, 186.
Yes, 186.
You know, as we get closer, reevaluating where the world is, it might get a little more expensive, too, but that's all a part of a negotiation clause in there.
Yeah, it says this, this can be changed. And underneath the payment schedule, it says that this also may be changed.
Yeah.
All right.
But if we don't get on the list.
So why don't we have a motion first and then we'll have discussion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to hire Nimric to, or get on the list to do a reappraisal.
Good. Second, motion by Mike, second by Joe. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? So carried 400.
And you all need to sign that one.
We've all received a draft of Dave's budget. There's a lot in it. The bottom line is that we're looking at a 4.9 something.
4.97, which still flux a little bit before we get to the final one.
Yeah.
But yeah, 4.97% increase over last year. It's a total of $119,000 difference increase from last year, which will have a tax impact of $24 per $100,000 valuation of a property. So in the, a few of the major things that we changed this year, besides the health insurance, it's quite a bit more expensive this year. We already got the first bill because they're on an annual basis and we're on a fiscal basis, so it's actually quite a bit more. And I put more in the healthcare budget because come next January, we're going to raise the rates again before we even get a chance to vote on paying more. So to just keep from going negative, there's a little bit more in there, but it's quite, went up quite a bit. Our insurance from BLCT for everything else we do, we didn't go up much at all. That only went up $6,000. So that was pretty good for all the liability insurance for the town. Other things are pretty straightforward. We did cut back in the Class 3 road fund. When we started it, we made it $100,000 to catch up on a lot of projects. We've decided this year we can cut it back $50,000 to try and be cognizant of the amount of pressure our residents are under from inflation. We can fund matches for a number of grants with that. And I'm looking at another grant from Homeland, not Homeland Security, actually, I think it is from them, but that will help replace culverts and bridges for flood issues. And seeing that every road in this town is hydrologically connected, we can hopefully get some of that, more money to make up for a little reduction this year. And we maintain our funding for vehicles because they're all on a replacement plan for 25 years. So it's very important we keep up on that because once you drop behind, you never catch up. Kind of a big boost, the solid waste implementation plan, but we're getting into a hazardous materials facility countywide being built in Bennington. So expenses are going up a little bit with that. I did look at board members' pay for the planning commission and DRB. When I got back to 2002, and it's been $100 since 2002.
20 years.
Yeah, and I stopped looking.
Yes.
I figured, you know, it's time, time to bring it up to 500 each. I mean, even that's not a great figure, but we have to start because $100 is really,
there's a lot of work involved.
No, there's a lot of work involved.
Yeah, it really, and it's a lot, yeah, it's a lot of, so I think it's a.
So I didn't think 500, moving to 500 was unreasonable after 20 years, so. Did that. Paving reserve during COVID and the expected economic turmoil that, we had trimmed that back, but it's back up to $45,000 for next year. We have some projects to do and projects coming up. We're looking at Perrin Acres and Hick, not Hickory Hill, Harvest Hills in that area. Both of those are going to have to be completely redone. They are not grant roads, so we'll have to pay for those. So we need to build up some money to get to work on those. Those are the two, actually Perrin Acres is probably more of our mileage than any other road. Buck Hill Road is still slated for this year. We have the money to do that, so we'll be pretty good. We have grants and projects out to 2024 already that are funded, and we're getting state managed grants, so we're just looking for more, which we'll have the matches for. Debt services, the same. Let's see.
Wasn't the top of Twitchell Hill one of the places they were going to redo also as far as paving? The last, around the corner at the top of Twitchell Hill.
Yes.
From there until the pavement ends.
Yeah, because that's really rough up there. That needs to be ground up and redone completely.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And I think that's it for the major changes. We try to keep it flat within reason, so the 5%, I think, is pretty reasonable in these circumstances. And like I said, before we get to the final one, I'd like to approve this at the January meeting, January 3rd, be the final meeting and approve it so we can have it go to the printers, which we'll get to, by the way. January 2nd is the holiday.
I was like, yep.
Which is Monday, so we wanted to talk about having the meeting on January 3rd on the Tuesday.
With your approval.
Yeah, with your approval, yeah. Before I throw you off, setting out different dates, but.
Should work for me.
Yeah, so if there's any questions, I think it's pretty much, without feedback, it'll pretty much stay the way it is.
Comments? Discussion? For a good job, Dave. Thank you.
And the DPW report. Beginning of the meeting, I was texting Mike because people kept walking in saying the roads were slippery and everything, so he's been out and the guys will be out before long to, apparently they had quite a squall heading north from here into the east side.
Yes, they did. Thank you. Glad they're going out.
And that about sums up the DPW report. It's winter, it's plowing, sanding, refilling the sand pile and just keeping all the equipment together to keep doing it. Now, they're not doing any brushing or anything over the next couple of weeks, but as we turn into the midwinter, that stuff will all start. But right now, it's plowing. We're looking for a pretty big mess on Thursday through Saturday morning.
Are we still using calcium chloride?
We use a magnesium chloride.
Magnesium chloride from Innovation Solutions, yeah, Innovation Solutions. How's that working out?
It's a much better product. Roads, you know, it's like everything when you talk about a road. The road has many working parts, from the ditches, the material they put down, to the chloride, to how you cut back the trees, but the chloro, this magnesium is better than what we were using. And it's a much more reliable product in its delivery to us, so we're not waiting for the stray tanker to show up with the chloride, which happened on occasions. So as part of the system of keeping the roads together, it's an effective product. Yeah, works out pretty good.
And how's that for price as far as compared to?
The price has been good. Yeah, it's, I forget what this new contract is for next year. Because part of the price is, you know, we get, they give us a tank, they replace the pumps on the tank.
This is just for summertime, though.
Right, right.
Yeah.
For the dirt roads, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it's a good deal, very reliable supplier. We never run low, so it's just worked out well. And, you know, we've been talking about it, because the roads are so much better, you know, there's a possibility of cutting back the application rate. You know, you have to gauge things as it goes, as it goes along to see what you can do, but, you know, using less is always better, but you want to maintain the level we've gotten the roads, too, so.
So it really depends on weather as well, as far as if you get a lot of rain, you're not going to need that at all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The dry winter we had a couple of years ago before we made some changes, there were some real dust storms out there, that's for sure, yeah. But I mean, you know, we drive it around, you don't see any real, I mean, the way it was a few years back, you don't see that anymore. So it's like I said, it's all part of doing everything from the lots of ditching they've done, some of which will fill in a little.
I did almost go off the road today, too. But I got here.
Usually whenever I'm on a dirt road and I see somebody running all jogger, and, you know, I always slow down and give them lots of room, but I slow down just so I'm not kicking up all that dust.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, a few years back, there was some dust out there. It is different, yeah.
So the comment I want to make is, I stopped in the garage, I think it was Wednesday last week, and I was really impressed with how well-maintained all the trucks are. I mean, they've all got their chains on, the plows are constantly being worked on, making sure they're right and everything. It's an excellent crew, and I just, I hope people appreciate what they do.
So the citizens of Shasberry weren't very aware of the Christmas parade the other day.
Yeah, what was that?
Oh, the firefighter parade. Yes, I, I had just barely saw it on something. I did not.
Staircases up on the hook and ladder waving, going by my house.
It was quite a spectacle. They went all the way from Bennington to North Bennington to Shasberry, all the way up to Arlington, all the firefighters with Santa on top.
Bennington rural, North Bennington, and.
Because we would love to give them a better reception if we knew where they were coming, you know?
It was just, it was Bennington, Bennington rural, there was a whole bunch of.
It was on Facebook, but very like quietly, I think. And so I didn't realize it until it was upon us. But next year, I'll put that on a firefighter parade.
And our thing at the school. Do a better job of talking that out.
Yep, we'll just keep getting better at communication, that's for sure.
Okay. All right. One of the town employees, Jen Holly, has a lot of different hats that she wears. She is the cemetery, works in the cemetery.
Cemetery superintendent.
She's also.
A webmaster.
Assistant town clerk.
Assistant town clerk.
Webmaster, and she's digitizing.
Yeah, she also is working on a special project for digitizing the cemetery records and creating space, an internet space. It's really amazing. You're going to get a demonstration next month. It's really quite an amazing program we found from this company in California. Well, go ahead, Oliver.
So, so come time to pay her, when she gets paid, there's all these different things. So, and it's causing problems in communications between Joan and everybody else down the line that has to check the right box and put it in the right column and all that sort of stuff. So one possibility is that they all get paid the same anyway, so she just, we give her a title called.
Administrative assistant.
Administrative assistant.
Yeah, and I sent that around on Friday after speaking with Joan again on Thursday because if you remember that $64 payroll you paid was to make a correction again, a payroll there.
Having all these checks, you can consolidate into one under one title.
Yeah.
It makes more sense.
Yeah, and then we can do the journal entries to move the money from where each fund is coming from. And part of the description is, the administrative assistant really is just a title because I found a lot of towns call them administrative assistants. But the main function of that will always be the webmaster. And then if, in the description, it's, you may be appointed cemetery superintendent, you may be appointed assistant town clerk, you may have specialized computer things to do, which, you know, I have to have it that way because should Jen decide to leave or something else happen, then the next person may not have all these roles. So you just get whittled off. The administrative assistant will always be the webmaster, and then they may be appointed to these other things. Jen happens to be appointed to all these other things, so this really operationally changes nothing, but administratively, it really will make a difference so that we can say.
Should simplify it.
Yeah, you're just paying this, and it'll be easier for pay data, it's not column B, C, D, you know, it's just pay this amount. So it's not, like I said, it's not changing anything, it's not changing any expense, it's just keeping Joan from having multiple headaches and you guys signing $64.
And us signing another warrant.
Yeah, which can cost money, too, if they decide to charge us for another payroll correction, you know, so.
So we have, Dave has drawn up an agreement, it's not really a contract, it's just, just an agreement?
No, it's just a job description to put in the personnel files so that we can, so I can just designate her as the administrative assistant. We can set up with Joan, she gets paid this amount, she'll turn in a timesheet like, like everybody else does and just pay her without, this is coming from here, this is coming from here, because that's crazy. It is.
So do you need a motion for us to create this?
I need you to make a motion to, for the creation of the administrative assistant as described in that, just because I can't create a job on my own, so, and I'm not really creating a job, combining a title.
So really, the motion should be not, not in her person, but just, just a position called administrative assistant.
Administrative assistant.
That's all we need to do, okay?
So a motion to create an administrative assistant position for the town of Shasberry.
As described.
As described by this document.
Seconded that?
Second, Martha, move the motion, Joe seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried 400. I think now we need a motion that Jen Holly be appointed to this position, is that?
No.
No, you don't need it?
No, she's already appointed to this position. She's already been appointed to the webmaster. Marlene appointed her as assistant town clerk. She's been appointed by the board as separate cemetery superintendent already, and part of that is, so she's already doing everything.
Yeah. You want me to sign this?
Uh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's right, the sign is.
It's a signature for the town administrator, the select board representative.
Oh, no, you don't sign that, that's what we sign with the employee.
Well, it says select board representative.
Yeah, well, when we do that, yeah, or you can sign it now, we know who we're talking about.
Okay.
So, not going to be anybody else, so.
Yeah, we kind of sprung it on you. The first Monday is the second, which is a federal holiday, rather than have people say, well, that's, that's a holiday, I wasn't aware of it, and that sort of stuff. We're proposing we have it on the following Tuesday. The next day, which would be Tuesday, the third. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah. I may be coming via Zoom just because I'll be at the VA that day, but.
And we're pretty sure that there will be a water board meeting?
Yeah, there will be a water board meeting also.
So I definitely will be via Zoom.
It'll be Tuesday, January 3rd. Our engineers, we had to refile all the paperwork by January 1st to maintain our place in line for the low-cost funding for the water main. So part of that was to frame working up the new system we're going to have to use. So Chrissy told me that I should have had that by the end of this week, so we'll definitely have something to discuss on the third, and I think we ought to keep that moving, too.
So it will be at 5:30?
Yeah, I'll give you a time when I see how long this proposal is.
Okay, I just, it will have to be on Zoom so that I can come into it for that, that's all, because I won't be able to get back from Albany that quickly.
Sure, no problem, that would be fine.
So, okay.
Other business?
So I was wondering about these two things. The watershed thing that you had sent around, what that was about.
That's the municipal road general permit. I just need Art to sign it as, as the chair. It's a tax, is what it is. The state says you must pay this, or we're not giving you any funding, so.
Okay, fair.
So we give them $640 and they're happy, so.
Great. And then the Catamount.
Oh, Catamount is the renewal of our annual contract.
And did we just sign a warrant today? Okay, so it'll be in the next.
No, it should have been on this one, not the payment. I'm just going to ask him for, I'm going to sign it, because I usually just.
Got it, okay.
So want a motion that you enter?
Yeah, you can make a motion to let me authorize.
This contract for another year?
Yeah.
With Catamount?
A motion to authorize Dave to sign a contract extension for another year with Catamount TB. Second?
Second, motion by Mike, second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So carried 400. And the last thing that I have is the. And the last thing that I have is the purchase of our land out back here was scheduled for finalization on, I don't know, the 19th?
The 19th, something like that, yeah.
Well, it's been extended to the 23rd. So if he gets everything out and they were working on it today, really working on cleaning it out, we may actually have the actual...
Closing?
Closing on the 23rd. Now, is there a warrant to be signed for all that, or how did the lawyers leave?
Well, we were having that discussion with them in the morning. There's talk of a wire transfer, which our people don't like us doing. So, and I believe the seller doesn't care if we give them a check. But we'll work out the details. So I have a call with the attorney in the morning. She's going to send the paperwork over, and I'll let Melanie try and talk about how we're actually going to pay.
Okay.
By the way, it doesn't matter, I mean, but it's preferred by our people at BLCT and our accountants that we don't do wire transfers.
Fair.
It's understandable.
We try, we try and keep them happy.
Yes, yep.
So anybody else have any business?
Nothing for me.
How about a motion?
A motion to adjourn.
A motion by Mike.
We have a hand by Oliver?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oliver, you have your hand raised?
I think that was hand claps.
Oh.
For a success magic. I hope, I hope.
Okay.
Thanks, Oliver.
Okay.
Oh, gosh.
All right, now I think we're ready.
Okay.
Andrea, did you have something to say? No?
No, no, thank you. I was just trying to, I thought Oliver needed to speak as well.
All right, thank you.
Second the motion?
We have a motion by Mike, second by Joe, that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yes. See everyone next year.